All right, my screen says we're live streaming. Okay. Well, I'd like to call this a meeting to order at 9:14. This is the Committee of the Whole, the Township of Georgian Bay. Our apologies to anybody who may be watching live on YouTube. We had some technical difficulties and we're still hoping to be able to get Councilor Jarvis to join us shortly. For the meantime, we are going to proceed. And I am going to begin with a land acknowledgement statement. And that is that I want to acknowledge that we are in the lands traditionally occupied by indigenous peoples. They continue to care for this land. They continue to shape our township. And we want to show our respect. Hundreds of years after the first treaties were signed, they remain relevant today in guiding our decisions and our actions. Make which? I also want to add while I'm on it that the Land Acknowledgement Committee of the District met earlier this week for the first time in a long time electronically, mind you. And we reviewed a nine-page document that came out of all our meetings from the past that I thought is an excellent summary. So I'm hoping it'll be published in final form in very short order. Around land acknowledgements and it's been a very educational experience and I just really am hoping that everyone in our, on our council, on our staff and in our township has opportunities to learn more and more about the indigenous people's history and in our relate, our attempts to improve our relationships with them after many, many years of well frankly abuse. With that, I'm going to ask whether any of our councillors have any pecuniary or code of conduct conflicts to declare. I'm seeing none. And with that, I'm going to move on to our first resolution once I find it. Moved by councillor Cooper, second of a councillor Douglas, be it resolved, the Committee of the Whole adopts the regular agenda December 17th, 2020 as circulated. All those in favor? And that is adopted. Thank you. All right, I'm Ms. Way, do we have anybody registered for the open forum?
No, we did not.
All right. So the next item is the draft procedure of bylaw that was shared with you, you know, something we've been working on since. Do we start this project in August?
Yes.
So I will let you Ms. Way introduce the topic and then we will get into some discussion as to how far, how close we think we are at this point.
Certainly. So firstly, just like to thank all the members who took the time to provide me feedback and submit comments, including those who provided hidden messages within their draft comments to make sure I was really reading them. I really was reading every word and that person will know who they are. Secondly, I'd like to note once again, this is still a draft document. I'm aware of the fact there's some grammatical errors and definitely some formatting issues, but until we get to the final version, that's a lot of a lot of time to fix all of that. So until I have the final version, I'm not going to bother checking for every little comma in the right spot. That kind of thing and capitalization and I think there's some weird spacing situations happening. So please bear that in mind. There were some very detailed comments that I received back. And if I took every single wordsmithing comment, we would have nine different versions of this bylaw. So if I didn't take every one of your suggestions, please don't take that personally. It's just there's only so many, you know, things that I can pick and choose from. The other thing is some of the comments I received are in conflict of best practices across the province or are in conflict to the municipal act. So there were some suggestions that I did not take into place for those, for those reasons. I think we're at a point where perhaps this can be passed in January, but that is up to council. So we can see how today's discussion goes.
Fair enough. Who would like to initiate some conversation? Councillor Hazelton?
So first of all, thank you Karen for doing the work that you have on this. But I would like to suggest that I think we're quite a ways, quite a ways away from a finished document. And I think the only way that we're going to get through it is to put it up on the screen and go through it. Section by section, line by line, or whatever, where we can provide comment and you can either tell us that those comments are not valid. By the way, I've had that conversation with you and you haven't told me any of my comments were not valid. And then we can get consensus from the other councillors on the appropriateness of those edits. And then hopefully we'll end up with a document that is close because I think the process we're going through here of councillors providing you input and then you cycling it back. I have to say, in my case, there are a ton of corrections that I think are critical that you and I talked about that have not made it into the document and I can only assume that you, you have run out of time and have not been able to get all those things into the documents. But we've set aside, you know, much of the day for doing this. And I think that certainly on this document, we can make very significant progress if we put it up on the screen and, and have you with your flying fingers making, making changes along the way. I can't imagine how else we're going to do this. If you're getting input from seven other people or six other people from me. It's, it has to be overwhelming and I can't imagine any other forum that would allow us to do this other than throwing it up on the screen and working through it.
All right. Ms. Way, shall we take that approach and just basically go, let me call it page by page?
Are you expecting me to make edits as we go?
Well, I, in a perfect world, that would be the case. And I know that puts you on the spot and I'm not trying to stress you out in any way, shape or form, but
I don't have a word version, just hold on. I don't have a word version in this portion of my computer. So I need to go back and get one. That's all. Sorry, just give me one second.
I mean, I, just as a general comment, I think correcting these documents is a daunting task. Yes, we've gone through this a couple of times, but what I'm finding is every time I go through the document and become more intimate with the document, I'm discovering more issues that need to be adjusted and corrected and not just clerical typos, but intent and inconsistencies and intent. And I think that if we're going to do it right, we need to go through it.
Councillor Douglas?
Thank you. I would agree with councillor.
What's his name?
Your name again, Alice. Sorry, councillor Hazelton.
On the screen there.
I know you, you can hear me, right? Yeah. Anyways, I think it's a good idea to go through it line by lining and maybe for Karen's sake. Karen, thank you for all the work you've put into this document. Maybe you can take the notes down of changes requested and then edit at your otherwise I think it would be very difficult because you're going to have to look at wording and so on. But if you were to take it down and, and just make a note of that particular number line and then come back with the edit later. Otherwise, I think we'll be here for quite a while. That's my suggestion. I'm not, not suggesting we don't do it line by line. I think we should. I just think that in order to give Karen the space and time she needs for proper wording, that she edit the changes as we go. But that's, you know, that's your call, Karen.
I would prefer that option. This is a very unorthodox way to approach this. I'm not opposed to it, but once again, there is what, seven of us sitting at this virtual table right now? So that's seven different versions of wordsmithing. And that's not really what today was supposed to be about. I'm really just trying to capture the concepts and arguing over whether it's a that shall be versus as to be, you know, that's not what I'm interested in and I don't think that's worth any of our time. So as long as we're not doing that, I'm happy with this approach, but I, I don't know if wordsmithing it as we go is going to be beneficial for our time.
Well, I, councillor, councillor Cooper?
This is another issue. Karen, do you have a phone number that councillor Jarvis can phone in on? I sent him a message saying, can, can't you phone in? And I know at other meetings I've been able, others have been able to, so.
He's here right now. He just joined.
Oh, okay.
But no, we don't have, we don't have phone calls on our Zoom.
Councillor Jarvis, welcome. I'm, I'm thinking just to further the, the conversation that we were having that as we go through and if there are, let me call it minor things like all letters missing here or there, we might make them, we might mention it in passing, but all we can, all Karen has to do is put a little tick beside that line, knowing that she has to go back and correct it as opposed to us waiting for her to type in all those, let me call it minor things. I think what's most important with these documents is the, let me call it the intent and the use of the document going forward. And so if we think that, you know, item one C is out to lunch, that's much more than whether or not the word should be as versus is. And so it's that bigger, those bigger issues that I think we should discuss. And I, and I think that if we think we're going to have a finalized document today with every single word smithing done, I think we're, we're being too ambitious. So I'm going to suggest Karen, if you can, perhaps share your screen with the, the document. And let's go through it, call it page by page and see what comments come up. I have no idea how well this will work, but I think it might be the easiest way to do it.
Hey, can you see my screen?
I can see a screen. I can actually see two pages worth of definitions, Schedule A.
Correct. Is that?
I'm just wondering, can you make it one page only and maybe therefore the print is a little bit larger?
For councillor Bocek who's trying to read it on his phone?
There, that, that, that makes it much easier.
Do you want me just to scroll until someone says stop? I'm not really sure. I can't see all of you right now.
We have, we have three pages of definitions.
Correct.
There are, I think, three or four that are missing that I'm sure you will be filling in at some point. Or am I in the wrong document?
You're in the wrong document.
Okay. I'm getting ahead of myself. Apologies.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest, given that most people are not going to be able to see other people and raising hands and so on, that if we are going to be in an informal world, that we have an opportunity just to kind of pipe up and say something and try not to clobber each other?
I, absolutely. I think we should open this up to a more called free speaking versus me recognizing everybody, but I'll just ask everybody to respect that, give others. If you're taking more than a few minutes, give everybody else a chance to jump in as well.
So I'll jump in and, and offer on item 24, where we talk about a member. One of the things that becomes clear as we read through the document here, that not only is this policy a procedure document applied to council, but it also applies to committee members. And in this case here, it reads duly appointed councillor. So that's a correction suggested here is a duly elected council, councillor or a duly appointed committee member. But we may want to also consider as we go through the document, defining a member, which is a council member and maybe a committee member. Because elsewhere in the document, we are going to have language that talks about a member is responsible for representing their electoral electors. And of course, a committee member who's not elected doesn't have any responsibility to their electoral members. And so it may be useful defining member dash councillor and member dash committee member.
Is there a general consensus to that? Yes or no?
I couldn't understand you, Karen.
Is there a general consensus on that item? Yes or no?
I, I had this. I had the same note myself.
I'm, I'm agreeing with Alice's thoughts. Yes.
Okay.
Would pause on 27?
Karen, any interest?
Okay, I, sorry, wasn't muted. So my opinion on that is that maybe we need to have a rethink on that. With regard to members of committees having a say here, I think that they should be voicing their opinion to their councillor or to council. I'm not so sure this document, does it really need to include committee members of the public?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, because I, I think it does in a sense that if we, if council creates a committee, they generally should follow the same rules and procedures that council does.
Okay, understood. Yep. Good point. Thank you.
You mean they have to behave themselves?
Ideally.
I, I unlike us, Peter.
Well, I, I think it's too bad that this document couldn't simply be one page. Please behave yourself.
Actually, Karen, go ahead. I, I'm going to skip over 27. Thanks.
Do we go to 26 then, Karen? Karen, 26?
Order of business?
Yeah, order of business. Each will be called for at business meetings. You have no definition for business meetings. So what is a business meeting?
A meeting where we conduct business?
Sorry, who can, who conducts business? Yeah, thank you. Sorry?
The committee.
Committee or council?
Whatever the committee is. Yes.
We need to, I think we need to be a little bit more definitive in, in that because as I said, business meetings, you talk about council, you talk about committees, but you don't talk about what a business, that they're, they're having business, that we're having business meetings is where I'm getting at.
Okay.
Business meeting sort of sits by itself.
Why don't we just take the word business out of there and leave the word meeting in there? And then I think it becomes universal.
Yeah, that would work.
Exactly what I was about to suggest.
Sure, Peter.
All right.
See what happens when we open up the floor?
Yeah. You guys, let me see how you let me in.
That would be the easiest one, just remove the word business there.
Yeah, that would be better.
And remove Jarvis.
That's a whole separate meeting.
Oh, back to, sorry, back to 28 there, Karen. Planning council meetings are, hang on, I just want to make sure. I know you, you did some corrections that I sent to you. Attended by council. This is just grammar. Planning council meetings are meetings attended by council held for the purpose of holding meetings in accordance with.
I'm not, councillor Jarvis, you missed the whole, we're not dealing with grammar today.
Okay, fine.
Sorry.
That's fine. I can send it back to you.
All right. So let's say we're done with Schedule A, we're moving on to Schedule B. Boy, if we make progress this fast on the next pages, we're, we're doing well.
We do get to Schedule C.
Well, okay, well, hey, you got to start with.
Don't start cooking your lunch.
Yeah.
Boy, you're scrolling quickly. People are fast.
I feel like I'm scrolling so slowly.
Oh, you're doing great.
No, you're fine by me. I presume we've all read this, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think as councillor Jarvis said, we're good until we get to C.
Ooh, this is the good part.
All right, we're now in C.
Hold it, hold it right there, Karen, please.
Now, okay, so.
Yeah, we were generally scheduled on a second Tuesday of the month, yet we've been having Thursday meetings. So I'm wondering if we should change that to just at the call of, call of the chair. Mayor.
Well, and my concern, as I think I've expressed earlier this week, is council meetings generally scheduled second Tuesday. I think we should also allow for them to be on the Monday, simply because if our planning council is, has a shorter agenda. And, and you know, in the past few years, planning councils also often been done in a couple hours and sometimes it takes all day. It's, well, I think we need to have that flexibility on a month-to-month basis depending upon the length of agendas.
Yeah.
I agree. I just, I just want to see that personally, you know, planning council Monday at 9:00 AM, I have no problem with that because that's where we have the most public attendance and we're doing it first, no problem. And I think council meetings will generally be scheduled fall, to follow planning council on, on the Monday or Tuesday or something to that effect. And my, I think that flexibility should be in there.
So what are we going to do with that one again? Are we, we're going to change, Karen, you're going to have a look at that one?
Just ask the committee of the whole, just as scheduled.
Okay.
Or at the call of the chair.
Call of the chair, yeah. There's a, no, well, right there, notwithstanding. We talk about changing, changing meeting times, I believe it is, yeah, 24 hours notice to each member of council. But what about advising the public as well?
That's kind of part, part of the municipal act.
How do you mean? This, this statement is, you mean?
Well, it's silent on the fact that when we schedule a meeting, this is saying one, so in theory, I could give legally council the same notice I give the public.
Oh, okay, fine.
Right. So this is saying, this is the minimum expectation for members or council.
Gotcha. Okay.
And, and this is due to extenuating or emergency circumstances. So hopefully it won't come into practice that often.
Correct. Hold on, G, right to do, I think it's at the bottom of this for, yeah, the last statement, for purposes of the section and emergency is a situation, yada, yada, yada. You've already got emergency defined in definitions. Do we need to redefine it? Or is, and is it redefined in fact? Is this a different definition?
Well, this is, this section, for the purposes of this section, this is what an emergency constitutes.
Okay, so specifically.
Us declaring an emergency in a permitting like Zoom meeting or.
Yeah.
Karen, it's councillor Bocek here. Going back to that, do we refer to Mayor Coats here as the head?
The head or the mayor is interchangeable.
Okay, so in the case of emergency, the head may, okay, so we can, is there a definition for head in the, in the, you left this?
I don't know if it's in this document, but it's referenced in the municipal act.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then we still want to clarify in here that head does define by the municipal act is whatever.
Just when I thought was referring to the head of council or the head of committee, which would be the chair or?
Head, head in a, in a boat, it's where you go to the bathroom.
Well, we do have a definition in our definitions. Head of council means the mayor of the corporation of the Township of Georgian Bay or doesn't.
That does it.
Did you send those to me? I'm going through, racing through this thing.
Peter, I don't think you're muted.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be able to read what I sent in and I can't. So thank you. I'm getting that sent to me. I have two screens going.
Can we pause on six? So in in the, this is the section of calling the meetings. And I'm trying to find out how we get language in here for committee meetings such that the the committee meetings can be called other than by the mayor. I'm not, not trying to diminish the value or the, the role of the mayor, but the, we've had some conversations recently where the, the chair of a committee should have a lot more influence in the calling of a meeting, given that their role as chair of the committee should be to bring the committee together where there is need to do that. And I think leaving it only to the mayor is, is inappropriate. I think we need to engage perhaps the, the chair of the committee, perhaps the clerk. But I think there, there needs to be something defined in this section that calls that out so that we don't have a situation like we had this year where we basically had all kinds of opportunity for committee meetings, but never called.
So the reason this year has been like that is because we're under an emergency and under the emergency section, I believe it's one of the later in it. When we're under a declaration of emergency, as we have been since March, only the mayor is able to call meetings of committees. So that's the circumstance we're under currently and that doesn't apply on a general basis.
So that, that doesn't, I don't, didn't see anywhere where that was defined in our policies or procedures. Maybe it's defined in the emergency procedures, but I think in, in a normal process, what I have been hearing from committee, committee groups is that there is a strong desire for the committees to have their chair play a process, sorry, play a role in the process of calling meetings. And I think that given that this section is all about calling meetings, that we should have some language in here that indicates the role of the chair of the committee in participating in the calling of meetings, not absolute perhaps, but maybe the chair of the committee in conjunction with the mayor or something like that. But I think there does, does need to be new language in here so that the committee can, can be represented in this calling process, even in an emergency.
Um, if I might suggest why what councillor Hazelton is saying that maybe we could have wording in there that says by request of the chair of a committee to the clerk and mayor for consideration.
Perfect.
That way it still falls in the.
Maybe, that should be, maybe scheduling a meeting instead of calling, maybe schedule the meeting because that would require some kind of confrontation with the staff, mayor.
I know, but the, the term is calling of a meeting, not scheduling of a meeting. So it needs to be calling of a meeting. Noted.
Karen, just on that, what about the agenda items? Is that covered here?
It's not covered in this section. It's covered under the agendas and we changed it to involve in consultation with the chair.
Thank you.
Calling of the meetings later on.
Thank you.
Sorry. I want to keep my notes straight too, so I need headings.
We didn't say a thing.
That's a good contribution he made.
This is why I come to the office for council meetings.
Yeah, I've met your dog.
Yes. She's really friendly, I swear. She's just enthusiastic when people come to the door.
Very friendly in a loud sort of way.
Yeah, yeah. And you don't. All of a sudden she's like, her big face is the window on the door.
And Karen has been known to react really well to doorbells going.
I don't do startles well. So quorum and related matters.
Pause for a second here on six, on G, I mean.
On G, yeah.
Okay, so given that we are, we have common language here and we have, yes, we have electronic meetings, but I think that given that there are a lot of circumstances that I've seen in both council and related council meetings and committee meetings that there are there are amendments that surface that often don't get invented until the, the point in time in which we are in the meeting. And so I think that there needs to be some opportunity here for the a formal motion to amend, to not have to be presented in writing. But in fairness, be able to be discussed and crafted by the clerk of that meeting. And so I, I think this presented in writing thing needs to have some more flexibility.
I think, well, I always have something in writing. Right, so, um. The intent of that is just that things aren't just verbally discussed and verbally passed, that it's somehow recorded, right? So as much as perhaps a member is not physically writing it out and passing it across the table, which may or may not have happened in a traditional setting, there is definitely a written version of it that is being crafted in the moment. Does that?
What if we replaced the word presented with confirmed?
That's fine with me.
Because, yeah, I, I fully agree with Counselor Hazelton that we don't want formality to prevent us from moving forward with whatever business is at hand. But any, any self-respecting clerk wants things in writing by the end of the day.
Yes. We prefer it that way.
Can we pause on I? And I have to, you're, you're right there. So Karen, you, you told me and I have to confess, I've forgotten here, but my, my focus here was that I wanted to find some way of ensuring that we have an ability to refer something and it looked like the language being taken out meant that we as a majority on council or committee didn't have an ability to refer. So could you?
Correct. So right now, when you refer something, you, you tick the little box referred and we're done. I don't like that practice personally because it doesn't necessarily give clear direction on why it's being referred or what needs to come back. So removing this forces council to be, instead of, you know, approving the resolution, the resolution would then need to be changed that this item is being referred back to staff or A, B, C, and D, or at a future date, or until we receive this documentation. So instead of the ability to just tick a little box saying, yeah, we're referring it, moving on, it's forcing the resolution to reflect that it's being referred.
So.
Finding that detail.
Do you think we could have some wording in here that where a matter is considered for being referred, that it does what you just said?
Okay.
Yeah, as opposed to removing entirely, which would lead people to believe that we can't refer anything.
Maybe we could put something in on that tick box, which says referred with instruction to clerk or to staff. And have the.
Yeah.
The instruction in that, in that document. That way you're not taking out referred, but you're just beefing it up with more detail as to how you want that, that referred to be dealt with.
And, and can you?
If I could just say, I think we need to say being referred, but with the following requirements or direction or something to.
I just said that, Peter.
I thought you were just saying that without the details. I think we need the actual.
With instruction to staff with the details. Okay, yeah, no, you didn't hear what I was saying. I don't think.
I got it.
But referred with direction.
Could explain to me deferred versus referred? And that usually when we defer something, it's because we need more information.
So when a council defers something, it's because you're not at a point where you want to make a decision as council. And so you're deferring it to the next meeting. Referring it is because you're giving it back to staff or you're giving it back to someone.
Okay, but it's, but usually in my.
Using it correctly, but yes.
Usually in my experience, deferred isn't just because we don't feel like making a decision. It's because we don't feel adequately informed to make the decision. And so I think we're often using deferred.
Instead of referred.
Or instead of referred.
Hence why I would like more direction.
You say tomato, I say tomato.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. I mean, it, it's like both deferred and referred have the same consequence, basically. And that is.
Oh, sorry, Karen.
Let's see, and that is, we're going to talk about it later. And we, we I, in most cases, I think we're going to talk about it later because we hope to get some more information in the meantime.
One thing that we do want to be aware of though, is that according to you, other laws or clauses somewhere, if something is deferred, it has to come back to the next council meeting for discussion and review, whereas something that is referred goes to staff and they choose to then bring it back when they're ready.
So the difference between the two words is timing.
Maybe, maybe work effort. I don't know. We can leave that with our, our clerk to guide us on.
Yeah. Looks good.
I'm good until page 22, if that helps.
And I'm good until 20.
Karen, sorry. Can you just, Karen, can you just go back a little bit, please? Yeah, I just want to take a look at this. Right, that's fine. Okay, scroll down a little bit, please. There was something in here that I wanted to look at. Okay, so are we changing our procedures here on how many times, rounds are we going to go with on, on speaking on a particular item?
This is only when an informal consideration motion has been presented and passed.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Which I guess we didn't do today, did we? Even though we're doing informal.
Yeah.
So this is, this is basically in regards to committee of the whole more than anything.
I imagine that's where more often will happen.
Yeah, all right.
But I think what's good about this, it allows us in a normal, formal council meeting to say, okay, for the next discussion, we're relaxing the rules.
All right, no, I understand that. Yep, thank you. Just want a clarification on that.
But I think it's important, if I can, just finish off on that thing. We do have a way of, if the majority of counselors think enough discussion has taken place, we can stop that relaxed rules. Do we not? I thought I read that somewhere here.
Yeah, shall cease when one of the following, so motion is considered. Do you want one? Do you want that beefed up more or giving more options?
I think there should be something in there, a point of order or something. I mean, because sometimes a conversation just gets repeated and repeated in just a different way. I think there should be something in there that allows it to, their request to be, to move on, basically.
Isn't that what he says? You can, a consensus on a ceasing informal consideration in the same way informal consideration began.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, I think, well, I guess what I'm saying is I think E is important.
Agreed.
Okay. I'd like to stop at 7:00 A.
So would I. Probably for the same reason. Go ahead, Peter.
Well, I think it's amusing.
Yeah, so do I.
No member shall use offensive words or parliamentary.
Obviously, we have a dim view of our parliament.
I think, I think you mean unparliamentary. Because otherwise, you know, if the words used in parliament, we can't use it.
We, well, it would restrict our conversations quite dramatically, I think.
Great, we'll have short meetings.
Maybe we should leave it in.
Can we pause there for a sec? So just in the, in the interest of trying to get all communications relevant to matters of council in one place, we do get communications that come in addressed to mayor and council from residents with information that relates to an open matter of township. And I think it would be valuable, given that much of the rest of this relates to things that could be topical, that it would be useful to have one place for it as opposed to, we have the CIP and then we have, we have to go off and find N number of emails that might have been shared with us that have this other related information.
Hold it right there, Karen. Yeah, down, okay, go down, just a little bit more open forum. On this page and on the next page, you mentioned open forum, but again, there's, there's no definition to my knowledge of open forum.
There's a section on it later on.
Okay. You got this before open forum, okay.
I mean, we can rearrange the orders of the schedules. That's.
Can we pause? So in all other council-related meetings, we have the reading or the review of strategic corrections. The committee of adjustment, which has similar considering, sorry, points of considering planning-related environmental matters, et cetera. I think that we should include our strategic direction following the land acknowledgement statement as we have in council, planning council and committee of the whole. Can we pause here? I'm a, a big fan of giving staff as much time as possible to respond to material provided by a delegation, but knowing how delegations usually operate, visual aids are often tweaked right up to the last day. I would prefer to see the two days, the two business days left in there as opposed to the seven days. Giving, giving people who are wanting to come and delegate to us so that they're not constrained by, by a seven-day window.
Is there a way of putting that so that people know that they should be trying to the best of their ability to provide seven days' notice at the, at the will of the clerk type of thing or discretion of the clerk?
I mean, I, I'm okay with setting the expectation. I don't think we even hold people to that requirement today. If somebody walks in with a memory stick, they can plug it in, away they go, but.
We try to be flexible. I mean, like if, you know, something happens, we had one presentation and had to replace it the morning after, that's not an uncommon occurrence. It's just nice to have all of our ducks in a row and especially with in-person meetings, when we can get everything all lined up and, and ready. It's nice to have that time, so.
I think what Sue, it's in, this just talks about arrangements have been made, doesn't mean the final version has been delivered seven days in advance.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah. Makes sense. Obviously, people are going to talk to the clerk anyway, so. And that clerk seems to. Using her discretion.
Anybody who doesn't go through the clerk and keep her happy is going to be in real trouble. Such as a counselor trying to sign in earlier this morning, you know?
Yeah, whatever.
On number seven there, I've never seen a delegation stay within 10 minutes. Is that relevant these days?
Um, 10 minutes is kind of a maximum. Most of them try, that doesn't include questions. I should also clarify that. So that's their actual time to present their material. Questions can exceed that. So on Tuesday morning, we had technically three delegations. The first two were within their 10 minutes to present their material. And then there was questions. And then the third one, because we had asked for that information, I knew in advance that that was going to be a lengthier presentation. So it didn't necessarily meet the normal requirements of a delegation. It wasn't like they were asking us to come and present. We had asked them to come and make. to come and present. We had asked them to come and make that information available for us. So that was kind of outside the norm. Um, but generally, ten minutes. It's good to give them a guideline or a limit. Um, sometimes they like to know how long they have to speak. It helps them kind of prepare their res, their presentations on what their expectation, you know, do I have two minutes? Do I have half an hour? What is that? We could do.
We also have, um, ten minutes followed by questions.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, that's. I think it's good the way it's written, and then add in the questions, I would agree with the council on that. I think if you allow any longer, and I mean, we're flexible, of course, but you end up getting some people who are not, um, maybe experienced at giving delegations, repeating themselves or making things very long. This sort of puts them into a, a position to make their, um, make their presentation very clear, because after ten minutes, I think a lot of us, you know, our attention span just starts wandering. So it just sort of allows them to put their points together within a ten-minute and be flexible and have questions. I would agree with that.
Could I hopefully suggest that, I mean, both six and seven, in both cases, the clerk is obviously given a fair bit of discretion on how this these items transpire, the, the seven-day notice and the ten-minute maximum. Um, it's not stated there. We are all aware that our clerk is doing a very, very good job of handling both situations, but maybe we should have it in there that the clerk has discretion, um, so that a future clerk can read this and see that they do have discretion and it won't stick to the letter of the law.
Um, I, I think when it comes to the ten minutes, I, I am definitely in favor of it because in my experience, uh, some delegations, um, have trouble getting to the point.
I agree, I agree. I have no problem with that as well. I just, we do know that our, excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Um, but this is allowed, me of the whole, it's allowed, isn't it?
Yep.
Um, I just think that we, we know that our clerk will hold this pretty close in hand, but also has a fair bit of discretion.
Well, I think the discretion actually should belong to council. The clerk can advise, and I think in some cases, if the, you know, we might want the clerk to, and I've seen this in the past where the clerk says, uh, you have two minutes left type of thing to the presenter.
Yep.
But I think it should be up to the council to have the freedom to say, well, we're gonna give this presenter an extra five minutes because we're fascinated.
I agree with that.
You're a good point.
Yeah, I mean, we could always run a timer. Sorry, Brian.
Uh, I was just saying, in, in past terms of council, not just the last term. Um, the chair always had a method of, at the ten-minute mark, cutting them off. I think that's, I think that's important. I think our last man had a submarine dive call. Uh, that at ten minutes, it would sound off, and basically that was the end of it. Because we do get people rambling on and on and on, and then it's the chair's decision there not to allow them to finish their, their thought. Or simply ask them to sit down. I think it needs to be, I, I don't think it should be a decision of council. Think it should be a decision of the chair. The chair is in control of the meeting. And he certainly has the power and ability to. Sorry, Peter, I didn't hear that.
I say, I'm just trying to be nice to council, but I agree, because I, I do recall one meeting, and when I believe a, a former clerk of ours was there, and, and she would sort of nudge me when there was two minutes left, and I would indicate to the speakers, because that was one where we're going through a whole slew of presenters, I believe for budget. And you don't, you don't want one party to go on and on and on versus another party, you know, let's be fair to everybody.
Yeah.
Correct, and I don't, I think if you're given the permission, if council's given the permission, uh, you're gonna have seven different opinions on whether to let somebody continue or, or to finish. So I think it should be at the direction of.
Well, if we, if, if we just leave seven in as is, um, then that becomes one of the rules, and then the chair would have the option to confer with council, shall we let this particular presenter go on longer?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with that, because I really believe this document being what it is, is more of a view from thirty thousand feet, and we seem to be nitpicking, changing shaws and ifs. Um, and, and really, this is all common sense when it comes to council. And the chair does to control the meeting, so I think we need to keep in, in our heads that this document is a view from above and all these little particulars may or may not happen in the council meeting. It's up to the chair to understand and, 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 uh, address the meeting as he sees fit.
Fellow councillor Bochek, uh, common sense is, uh, there's no definition for it in, in this, in this um, rules of, uh, bylaw to begin with, and we all know that everybody has a different idea of what common sense is. Um, and we've got to consider what the next clerk and council will be reading. Uh, when it comes to this document, and I think we've got to put something in place that is easily understood and because if you hold people to the letter of the law, which in some cases is, is very practical, it's the way to do it. There may be times, as has been suggested already, where that is not, uh, not necessarily a good idea or not what council wants. And we have to have a, an allowance, um, that provides for that, is what I'm getting at. As, so, again, yes, I think, thank you, I see what you're doing there, Karen, uh, something along those lines. Somewhere in there, I think we've got to allow the, the chair, as you suggested, Brian, or was it Cynthia? The chair can, uh, step in and say, you've got to, you've got two more minutes if you'd like, or something along those lines.
Well, that, that would be under point eight.
And I just, I was reading that as I'm saying that too, uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
And, and point nine makes it clear that the ten minutes does not include questions.
Yeah, perhaps we're covered anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fair the way it's written now, that small change that was made to eight, uh, really makes sense.
Okay.
There was just some word of it being a council's decision on, on delegations, and I wanted to be very clear that I think it should be the chair.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Please pause. In item twelve, um, and this is, I apologize, it's a, perhaps a punctuation net, but um, we have ad hoc committees, we have advisory groups. Um, do we have an ad hoc advisory group? Uh, should there be a comma after ad hoc to separate the meeting so that we don't accidentally, uh, um, remove the ability of an advisory group or committee? Because right now, we don't have any ad hoc groups or committees, we have advisory group or advisory committee, anyways, I just, it, it, it's, it's a tiny thing, but it has a huge implication in the meaning of that.
So, my mic was muted, muted, and I'd like to address council Hazleton's comments there. Council Hazleton, we are suggesting a common talk and advisory group? Instead of having it one word?
Yes, I was saying that there is a difference between an ad hoc group and a advisory group.
Are we in agreement then?
So a simple, a simple slash between the two would clarify that.
Yeah, comma.
Maybe we should go back up, Karen, if we could go back up a little bit just to that part of the, um, I think it was number eight or nine.
Twelve, there it is.
There's a definite distinction between an ad hoc committee and an advisory group, but it's an ad hoc advisory group or committee. I think there should be a slash between the two.
Yeah.
Clerical, it's grammar.
Legal decisions are decided on commas, sadly.
So just, sorry, I had a bunch of comments about recording committee meetings and streaming them and not streaming them. I'd just like to clarify, because that seemed to be a common theme. Um, because we're on Zoom, so why can't we just record it? Well, we could have done the same thing. I'm trying to treat this as if it was an in-person meeting and an electronic meeting. And just because we have recording equipment in the council chamber didn't necessarily mean that we would be recording those meetings or broadcasting them live, so. Um, it's kind of an all or nothing. It's hard to pick and choose which committees you do and do not, but I think those advisory committees, the way we've been treating them and treating them consistently as we did when they were in person, is best practice for our community, but that's just, that was a common question that I got in a lot of the comments.
Karen?
Yes.
Can we go back to that point, please? Could you scroll back up to it? Uh, I'm sorry, but you were breaking up so much, I had difficulty understanding what you were saying, because I also made comment on recording all our meetings. So, could you try, try again?
Yeah, um, so the recording of the meetings, as much as, you know, everything is digital right now, we're over Zoom, and it seems super easy just to hit the record button, so why aren't we doing it? Because we can, is kind of some of the feedback I've gotten, but we need to treat these the same way we would treat them if it was an in-person meeting. So when we had committee meetings such as, you know, the Honey Harbor keg meeting and taking place in the council chamber. Well, in theory, we could have recorded that as well, but we didn't because it was a committee meeting, right? So just because we're on Zoom doesn't mean we're going to record or like stream those meetings live.
But, but what is, but in terms of interest of, uh, making it available to our communities, not just at the time, why can't we record committee meetings?
So do we want to record every single committee meeting and post it?
I, I, I'm sort of saying, in, in the interest of, uh, transparency, but also in the interest of, uh, giving our communities access to things, not just when it's live. In other words, right now, we would, any committee meeting that somebody wanted to see, they could see it live because it's being zoomed, correct?
Well, they can't watch it live, they can attend the meeting virtually, as opposed to coming and sitting in the room and watching the meeting.
Sorry, what I meant by live is they can, they can watch the Zoom at that time.
Correct.
But if they can't watch it at that time, I'm thinking about making information and meeting uh, discussions available to our communities, and I'm asking, why wouldn't we want to do that anyway? Thought transparency was one of our objectives.
If I can just interrupt for a moment.
I might interject there a little.
So when, hi. So when we went to, uh, recording committee of adjustment, for instance, because we did not record that in, in the past. We, uh, we waited until we were choosing new members, because when people sign up for these committees, they don't necessarily sign up to be recorded and broadcast. So we had to make sure the members were comfortable with that, so that was a step we took. So I think changing this right now would be premature to even checking with the members if they were okay with that.
So, thank you, Jessica, and I'm, I'm aware of that happening with the committee of adjustment, and I'm saying the objective could be that we do the same thing and as soon as we can with our other committees, that's uh, what I'm suggesting, uh, that would, um, I, I, I think it's important. Our role is to be available to our constituents, I call them customers. Uh, and, um, and, and I think if our committee members are uncomfortable with it, then, then when we get to the point of reappointing, whether it's annually or every four years, that we we make that change, so the availability is there for somebody that works all day long and can't tune in. Uh, can see it, uh, at night.
Yeah, it would make sense.
Um, I, I'm just gonna.
I think we better check privacy laws, uh, when it comes to this.
Okay, I'm just gonna try and pipe up here on that one. Um, I think we need to look into the privacy laws, and I also would like to just state that I, although I agree, uh, that it would be nice for people to have the ability to watch, they do have the ability at the time and need to make themselves available, and the only reason I say that, it's not for a lack of transparency, but um, perhaps each committee member has to be aware, and maybe that will, you know, make the decider as to whether or not they're gonna get on that committee. Um, not everybody wants their face smattered all over the place, but I'd hate to, uh, have a committee member that is well-qualified to be there, that would have great input to not take on that role because, uh, they're being recorded. Uh, I, yeah, I just, uh, just the things you can do right now with recordings and you know, pulling words out and, and putting that into the media, it's, it's, uh, that can be done, and I think that would be a nervous position for some people. It's not being quoted properly.
I wonder if I could suggest, I know from our, our last council meeting, we were talking, we gave some homework to, uh, our CEO in regard to committees in the future and who should be appointed to them, and, and you know, including some clarification of what's the difference between an ad hoc committee versus a advisory group, et cetera. And I'm wondering if perhaps, uh, Ms. Gunby, as part of your deliberations on that, before you come back to council, you might include comments on whether the meetings are recorded or not. Um, and that might, and I'm, I'm not suggesting this is where we're gonna end up, but that might mean that perhaps, perhaps advisory groups will be recorded and ad hoc committees will not, or vice versa, or something, I don't know, but I'm just wondering if we could make that part of our committee discussions that I know will be coming in the near future.
Definitely.
One comment on all of this, um, uh, I, I am in favor generally of, uh, recording committees. Um, I think that in the permission-based world in which we live, where we have to give permissions to get emails and things like that, um, it would be fairly easy, uh, for a form to be, uh, created uh, for committee members that gives, uh, them the ability to state that they are in favor or not in favor of being recorded. And, um, that they don't have to have that, uh, made public in the committee group, but, um, that, uh, our clerk or CEO could gather up these permission-based forms. And if there is unanimous consent, then that committee could be easily recorded. If there's not unanimous consent, then it wouldn't have to be recorded, it could be blocked from being recorded. And the, um, the, the privacy of who, who didn't want to be recorded would be constrained only to our clerk or CEO. And so that privacy would also be respected, so I think it's a, a somewhat easy process that could go, could be gone through. And it could be gone through immediately for all committees that we have, uh, so we don't have to wait till the next term uh, to get this kind of recording opportunity put in place. So Mayor Kutsir, I'd just like to add, or to her clerk, I'd just like to add that, um, I understand what councillor Hazelton's saying and, and councillor Douglas. Um, so it's unfair to switch engines or switch direction mid-stream. But it, it, when we are getting people applying to committees, we could indicate in part of the application process that all committee meetings will be recorded. So that's sort of where I would go with this, so that, uh, there's an awareness, and if somebody has a real reticent to, reticence to it, we need to understand why and, and, uh, uh, consider that as ca, at council, but I would encourage that in the future that we we, um, make that just part of what we do. Thank you.
So if I could just pipe up on that one, Peter, I think what, um, Al, he, Al is saying is that, um, you know, I think that's a good point. I, I, I would hate to see that process, and this is maybe something that can be discussed during, as, uh, Mayor Kutsir said, when we start talking about all these things, but I think you're putting people on the hot spot right then. I, I like the idea of how Hazelton's, councillor Hazelton's suggestion on, uh, putting that through, and then a decision can be made. I, I just would hate to lose somebody really good because of that. Um, so maybe we can talk about that in the new term, when we talk about all of the committees as, uh, Mayor Kutsir has suggested. I think that would be a fair discussion to have.
Okay, so I, I think, well, we should leave perhaps this page as is for now. Good news about this is it's a living document, as our, our clerk and CEO like to say. And therefore, if we fo, following our committee discussions in the next month or two, decide that we should make a change to this, we can certainly do that. Okay. We scroll on.
We pause on two?
So items four and five. I have done some research and item four is an exact copy lift and place from section 224 of the municipal act. Item, that's item D, 224D of the municipal act. Item five is an exact lift and drop of section 224D point one of the municipal act. I'm concerned that we are redacting responsibilities of council that have been assigned by the municipal act. And I'm not sure that we are allowed to do that.
The municipal act would trump this bylaw regardless.
So if, if that's the case, let's be consistent with the municipal act.
Okay.
Karen, could I just weigh in on another point here? Under point A, one, it is the role of council to represent the public and consider the well-being of and interests of the, instead of that, of all residents of the township. So let's be more specific because somebody might think township, well, that's, you know, the council and staff. So I thought it would be helpful to be very specific that that's what our job is to be looking after the interests of all of the residents.
So if I, if I can just, doesn't that really say that to represent the public and consider the well-being? I mean, it already says the public, which.
I'm in, I'm gonna agree with Cynthia on this, Peter. I think that what we're doing here is, in a sense, we've, well-being of the interest of the, talk, represent the public and consider. And then the well-being in, in the interest of the township. We've got to consider the township both physically and, and the, and the residents. And I think that's already noted in there.
If I could pipe up, once again, the municipal act has these exact words. The only different word is we've put in township and municipal act has the word municipality. Otherwise, the wording is identical.
So just for clarification, what you're suggesting is the word public covers that off?
Represent the public. I would say yes, but it does, Al has just indicated it's written right out of the municipal act.
Okay. Karen, could we go back just up? I'm just reading my, I've got my documents here now and where it says, performing such, this is B, performing such other duties as are assigned by the municipality.
Yes.
And the municipal, could we not just say municipal council?
The reason I added bi-formal direction to council was to clarify that any one member can't necessarily go rogue and direct the C O to do something without the consensus of council itself.
Better.
That was kind of.
So isn't the term.
Clarify.
So just my, so my question is, isn't the word council, all of council, it's not as council or?
I think it's, could be open to interpretation.
Okay, so you're just nailing it down even more and you've added this in, is that correct?
The bi-formal direction to council, yes.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just put a note in there? It's a good point, Peter. I think it should be bi-formal direction of all of council decision, not just a counselor. Is that opens our clerk up to being, you know, really pressured, I think.
So are we talking about changing this? Because it says formal direction of council. There's nothing to do with counselor in there at all.
Well, that discussion just came up with Peter and with Karen.
I know.
And so is it broad enough, Karen? I, I mean, personally, I think if the question's even been asked here, then somebody, that's an interpretation thing. Then I think it should be more, there should be clearer wording in there that says by all of council, not by one counselor.
Or by resolution of council?
Or by resolution of council.
Okay.
Just for clarification, the word council is all of council. Is it not, Karen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Not just you, Peter.
I'd be happy to go that way. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, open forum, okay.
Karen, you're going really quickly. Could you go to number two? The bottom. Okay. So under the second paragraph, in the second paragraph, it, it talks about next meeting. So meeting of what?
Whatever meeting they're at. Because we have open forum now in council and at committee of the whole. It's to stop someone from coming to council and being able to direct direction at that exact meeting without providing that agenda item in advance, which means someone might not have known about it or been able to have proper notice that that item was being discussed, decision was being made. So it needs to come forward at the next meeting.
Of, next meeting of council?
Or. Yeah.
Okay, it, it seems a bit vague to me, but anyway.
You take the S off deems there, just grammatically speaking.
I think it is, it is crossed out. It's just not.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Again, grammar.
I mean, yeah. Um.
Line through the.
We pause there for a sec? No, never mind.
This is, again, this is more grammar than anything else, Karen, but since I'm looking at it. Yeah, I know we've crossed out three. I guess you're just renumbering things. But under the three electronic meetings of committees, I think a committee meeting may be conducted electronically. Might make that sound a little bit better.
And Karen, just before you go on, I do remember what I was trying to get at here. We previously talked about the, the calling of committee meetings. And so I don't want it to be inconsistent with what we had previously talked about and putting in here only as the call of the mayor. Because we had previously talked about that the, the chair of a committee in conjunction with the clerk and the mayor would likely be three people that would be involved in calling meeting, a committee meeting. And we have wording in here that may be inconsistent. So I don't want to words with it now, but I'll leave it up to you to, we had previously talked about something that I thought we agreed on. And this may be inconsistent.
I think this was a carryover from the emergency meetings for electronic purposes. So that's kind of where it came from, but yeah.
Thank you.
Looks like it.
That's it.
All right.
So Karen, again, I've got a few, you know, the minor grammar things. I'll just send them back over to you.
Yep.
Okay.
So I think we've managed to go through this and I think with some good comments. And I know Karen was taking lots of notes. I think it's, it's, it's good that actually the great majority of words there were able to scroll through without comments. So I think we're getting quite close and I consider that a bit of quite an achievement. Obviously, I, I have to have a, a motion here. And I have moved by Counselor Hazelton, second by Counselor Jarvis. Be resolved that the committee of the whole received the clerk's report 2020-30 regarding the draft procedure bylaw. And that the procedure bylaw be brought forward to council for approval as amended. All those in favor? All right, so that means Karen, the ball is back in your court. I'm wondering if we shouldn't take a, a quick break before we jump into our review of the code of conduct. If, or does everyone just keep on going? Oh, we got, so it's 10:33. Why don't we say 10:45, we will start code of conduct review? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
So previously on a discussion to counsel, it was decided that there would be three levels. And so that was the direction I went with. In the previous drafts of the code of conduct for the complaint protocol, however, based off the feedback I received from the previous draft leading up into this meeting, um, clearly there was some inconsistencies on how that was perceived. The issue is this dictates the rest of the documents. So unless I can get clear consensus and clear direction from council on how this complaint protocol is going to play out, I can't complete the document. So really what I'm looking for today is clear direction and how I'm going to move forward with the complaint protocol. My general options right now are going back to how the integrity commissioner was our only point of contact for complaints. Having a two-step system of including a mediation and then the integrity commissioner or three steps. Solution of conflict resolution mediation and the integrity commissioner, or if someone else has another idea, I'm open to it. But really this impacts everything else and I can't move forward until I have this decision. So really I'm not interested in going through this document page by page like we did the procedural by law. Because there's so many changes that still will need to come. And until I get this narrowed down, I can't move forward. So that's what I'm looking for today from council.
All right. I, I think Counselor Cooper's hand beat Counselor Weankles by half a second. So Co- Cooper first, Weankle two.
Thank you, Chair Kutsier and, uh, Karen, I, I see what you're trying to do here is to maybe streamline it a bit. And I, I can understand that. I, I think there might be something, and you can tell me if this is something you can have as part of the process. One of the issues that have, has come up in the past is that the, either the integrity commissioner or in the future, if there's a mediator and then an integrity commissioner is that, you know, in, in a perfect world, that individual will investigate both sides of the issue and be able to bring out information from both sides to support or not support whatever the contention is. But I think what's sort of transpiring here as I'm seeing is that, um, with the use of the code of conduct, um, I mean, from my perspective, I, I sort of considered that it, by certain individuals, it's actually been used as a bit of a weapon. But regardless of that, um, one of the ways I think we could, um, avoid some of this, uh, sort of levels or escalation and so forth is that if there was some, uh, what shall I say, ability for the clerk, A, you're going to be, according to this document, I think, taking all applications for complaints. Is that correct?
That's kind of the idea unless we get signed directly to the integrity commissioner. So the one caveat is the MCIA, uh, has its own set of rules. So we can't circumvent that process. So if there's any complaint that comes in for an MCIA, there is a potential that it could go straight to the integrity commissioner. But I would like to build in a better record keeping process and, um, in an effort to make sure that, you know, if it's about a specific meeting, then when I notify the integrity commissioner, there's an option of being able to give all the records I would have on that meeting. So the resolutions, the minutes, et cetera. Automatically, right?
So one of the things that, that even including the MCIA, are you telling me that, uh, that, uh, the integrity commissioners' processes are, are they, are all of those processes re, um, defined by, by municipal law or are they defined by partially by what the integrity commissioner considers to be their own practices?
It's a bit of a combo, but mostly through their practices, right? Or whatever we stipulate in our, in our procedures or code of conduct, the complete protocol. So if we say, you know, A, B, C, and D shall happen, then, you know, we need to put in place protocols to make sure those things do happen. Um, and we signed an agreement with our integrity commissioner and in part that that respect is mutual and an understanding of this is our code of conduct and this is what they're agreeing to be the integrity commissioner for.
So to, to bring that further forward, um, in terms of what I'm trying to get at here is that there can be some misunderstandings, errors in factual, factual, facts, um, assertions that are untrue or true, uh, and our staff as our clerk, um, may or may not be able to advise on that before we go down the road. So, um, I'm wondering, as opposed to having three phases, if there were, for example, two phases, that the clerk in, in terms of, can we not say that the clerk has to take all complaints? And if it's an MCIA, that it has to go directly to the, uh, uh, integrity commissioner, but that, that the part of the role of the clerk is to, uh, in reading the complaint says, uh, gee, there's a problem here with what's being claimed because it's being claimed as A and in fact, it's not A at all. So, uh, I, I'm trying to avoid uh, what, what have we seen in the past, uh, we may see in the future. So can you comment on that?
I don't think that should be for the clerk to necessarily make that decision because it puts me in the middle of the public and the council. And that's why we have the integrity commissioner. But if we did have some other type of conflict resolution mediation process, that might be a way to clearly, you know, have those parties discuss and openly determine, oh, I'm sorry, that was my misunderstanding or explaining this is the interpretation of that act, et cetera. Um, versus me having to make that decision before it goes to the IC. Does that? Did I answer your question? Don't look like I answered your question.
Um, well, I think you, you sort of did. And I, I, I think what you're saying is you don't want to, um, put it on the back of the clerk to have to make, determinations. And I'm sort of saying not so much a determination, but, um, a review of the facts known to the township. And, and is there any reason that we can't demand that the, the, the facts that are being, uh, or the, the points that are being raised in the complaint, if we as a township and you as a clerk or the CAO know that there are certain elements of this that are just completely, uh, erroneous, off base, is there a way of, uh, making sure that the mediator and/or the integrity commissioner is aware of that problem?
As if not a deciding factor, I think it would be very difficult for a staff member to say, hey, this is bogus. But if we have more of an involvement in initiating or being that record keeper and, you know, and it's, you know, council member A said this, this, and this at a council meeting, well, we can say, well, that matter was never even addressed. Here's the recording, here are the minutes, right? So it's, it's blatant from the beginning that that didn't transpire because we have that recorded, right? We can, you know, factually prove that that never occurred. Um, so I think that that would help mediate that kind of from that escalating any further, knowing, having that evidence immediately provided versus having a staff member making that determination.
If I could just jump in for a second, I think, I think Peter, what you're asking is for the staff to make a determination on evidence being given to the integrity commissioner or looked at and they would have to, then they'd be making the decision. And I think that's the job of the integrity commissioner and not of our, our staff. I mean, when allegations are made, I, I agree, maybe they're not correct. But really that's the integrity commissioner's job is to collect those documents and make that decision. And I think that's a big responsibility to start asking our staff or our clerk to do. Um, I, I really do. I just think that that's puts them in a very bad position and they're not in that, um, it's not their position to, uh, from a legal standpoint to interpret what is being said in perhaps a document or an email or I think that's really why we have an integrity commissioner. I don't think we should be asking our clerk to be doing that or any staff personally.
Um, I'm just gonna add in Counselor Weanko, I think we're going more informal. So even though I recognized your hand, um, I, I think you're gonna have to speak up.
Well, this is a quite concern to me. I, I found that reading the, the three phases a bit daunting if an individual was going to file a complaint. Uh, he or she would have to justify it three times, uh, to different people. And I found that kind of daunting for anybody even to want to get involved in. When I was looking at it, I was more interested in uh, having the two phases, but using, um, possibly the mayor and the CAO instead of a, a mediator. Quite often mediators, professional mediators have some legal background. So it'd be almost the same as an integrity commissioner. So you might find that the, the way the approach resolution might be the very same way. Whereas if it's a mayor and, and the CAO and the complaint, it might get more to, uh, Counselor Cooper's concern where they would look at the facts to find out if all the facts are correct and see if they can resolve it in-house, uh, before we go external. And that might be what we need in a lot of cases, a minor, uh, somebody's irritated by another counselor, be, you know, a member of the public irritated by a counselor or whatever. It could probably maybe be resolved in-house when all the facts come out and all the facts are confirmed. And I'd rather do that than go into a mediator which, you know, would cost money. And it's going to be a significant investigation by them, which would be similar to integrity commissioner. So I was hoping to keep it in-house, at least in the first phase. And at that point, you can almost hope that the CAO and the mayor and the complaint all kind of agree that there's more to it and that should go the integrity commissioner. That's where I was looking at it anyway. I was trying to save money also. Why, why pay mediator and integrity commissioner to do something very similar? That was my opinion anyway.
Can I, um, just pipe up for a sec? So, um, our clerk started off this session with requesting, I think that we determine whether or not we are going to, uh, live with her two-step approach that she has documented circulated or not. And, uh, if we are, then I think she was suggesting that we could begin to go through the document. No? Okay. Anyways, from my perspective, I'm okay with the two-step approach. Um, but, uh, I have a ream of edits in the document, corrections in the document, um, that I think we, we want to be aware of. Um, that, uh, that it's going to take quite a bit of time to go through them. Um, I've gone through them, um, an initial verbal pass with our, our clerk. But similar to the previous document, I think, uh, time was not in, in her favor and, uh, she wasn't able to, um, get certainly my edits into the system. Um, but I think my edits may have, uh, valid, um, points of discussion with other counselors. And so it may, it, I suggest that, um, a process similar to what we had with the, um, uh, procedural by law, probably needs to take place with this code of conduct by law where we can get to these paragraphs and discuss and debate and agree on them. Uh, or not agree on them, be that whatever the case may be. Um, because without this kind of, uh, community forum, um, Karen is going to be, uh, barraged with comments about this and comments about that. And, um, uh, we're going to be having this meeting again in January, in February, and in March. Until we have an opportunity to have an open forum and go through this like we did the, uh, the procedural by law.
I don't disagree with that idea. I just don't think the version that is in front of you is worth our time to do that with today.
All right. Let's, let's see if we can't, um, settle as a council on it. Let me call it the overall format first, because that was the first step that you asked for. And I think it's important. Um, that we, we talk about, um, whether, you know, two or three different levels. I mean, I, I like, I like the, the sound of our clerk being, I'm not sure gatekeeper is the right word, but the more that can, the more that the, the clerk can be involved with the initial complaint, if I can put it that way, I think the better, simply because as she said, she can provide the facts as we know them, the recorded facts. Um, and, and that may in some cases solve the problem, it may not. Um, I mean, anybody who wants to file a complaint, regardless of the level is, is, is upset. Um, and, but they may have misinterpreted, misunderstood, um, misheard, uh, what was going on. So I think I, I like the fact of having our, our clerk be the, the, the gatekeeper. I personally in favor, the two option approach as opposed to the three, uh, and, and being if, if, uh, the complainant is, is open to this, I think the idea of having a less formal, less structured discussion uh, versus going immediately to the integrity commissioner, if that can solve it, because the integrity commissioner is very thorough. Regardless of whether or not you like what you read, that she puts in her reports, they're long, extensive, thorough reports, uh, which may or may not cover all bases. Um, if we can avoid that step, I think it's better for everybody, including the complainant. If we can resolve it beforehand. So I, I like the idea of having a option to potentially, hopefully resolve the issue before we get to, let me call it the lawyers involved. And I mean, I, I would say the same thing in any normal business situation. If you can solve it before the lawyers get involved, do so. That won't always work, but I, I liked the idea of having that in. Brian?
I'm gonna address my question to our clerk, Ms. Wade. Um, in my response to your request, uh, I mentioned that I thought there should be a stage where, um, if there's a complaint lodged, that the clerk, um, addresses the complaint. And I think there should be a step in
The back of the clerk to have to make determinations. And I'm sort of saying not so much a determination, but a review of the facts known to the township. And and is there any reason that we can't demand that the 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 facts that are being or the the points that are being raised in the complaint, if we as a township and you as a clerk or the C A O know that there are certain elements of this that are just completely erroneous, off base? Is there a way of making sure that the mediator and or the integrity commissioner is aware of that problem?
As like not a deciding factor, I think it would be very difficult for a staff member to say, hey, this is bogus. But if we have more of an involvement in initiating or being that record keeper and you know, and it's, you know, council member A said this, this, and this at a council meeting, well, we can say, well, that matter was never even addressed. Here's the recording, here are the minutes, right? So it's it's blatant from the beginning that that didn't transpire because we have that recorded, right? We can, you know, factually prove that that never occurred. So I think that that would help mediate that kind of from that escalating any further, knowing having that evidence immediately provided versus having a staff member making that determination.
If I could just jump in for a second, I think I think Peter, what you're asking is for the staff to make a determination on evidence being given to the integrity commissioner or looked at and they would have to, then they'd be making the decision. And I think that's the job of the integrity commissioner and not of our our staff. I mean, when allegations are made, I I agree, maybe they're not correct. But really, that's the integrity commissioner's job is to collect those documents and make that decision. And I think that's a big responsibility to start asking our staff or our clerk to do. I I really do. I just think that that puts them in a very bad position and they're not in that. It's not their position to from a legal standpoint to interpret what is being said in perhaps a document or an email or I think that's really why we have an integrity commissioner. I don't think we should be asking our clerk to be doing that or any staff personally.
I'm just gonna add in Council Reanko, I think we're going more informal. So even though I recognized your hand, I I think you're gonna have to speak up.
This is quite concerned to me. I I found that reading the the three phases a bit daunting if an individual was going to file a complaint. He or she would have to justify it three times to different people. And I found that kind of daunting for anybody even to want to get involved in. When I was looking at it, I was more interested in having the two phases, but using possibly the mayor and the C A O instead of a mediator. Quite often mediators, professional mediators have some legal background. So it'd be almost the same as an integrity commissioner. So you might find that the the way the approach resolution might be the very same way. Whereas if it's a mayor and and the C A O and the complaint, it might get more to Counselor Cooper's concern where they would look at the facts to find out if all the facts are correct and see if they can resolve it in house before we go external. And that might be what we need in a lot of cases, a minor. Somebody's irritated by another counselor, be you know, a member of the public irritated by a counselor or whatever. It could probably maybe resolved in house when all the facts come out and all the facts are confirmed. And I'd rather do that than going to a mediator which, you know, costs money. And it's going to be a significant investigation by them, which would be similar to integrity commissioner. So I was hoping to keep it in house, at least in the first phase. And at that point, you can almost hope that the C A O and the mayor and the complaint all kind of agree that there's more to it and that should go the integrity commissioner. That's where I was looking at it anyway. I was trying to say money also, why why pay mediator and integrity commissioner to do something very similar? That was my opinion anyway.
Can I just pipe up for a sec? So our clerk started off this session with requesting, I think that we determine whether or not we are going to live with her two step approach that she has documented circulated or not. And if we are, then I think she was suggesting that we could begin to go through the document. No? Okay. Anyways, from my perspective, I'm okay with the two step approach. But I have a ream of edits in the document, corrections in the document that I think we we want to be aware of. That that it's going to take quite a bit of time to go through them. I've gone through them an initial verbal pass with our our clerk. But similar to the previous document, I think time was not in in her favor and she wasn't able to get certainly my edits into the system. But I think my edits may have valid points of discussion with other counselors. And so it may, I suggest that a process similar to what we had with the procedural bylaw probably needs to take place with this code of conduct by law where we can get to these paragraphs and discuss and debate and agree on them or not agree on them, be that whatever the case may be. Because without this kind of community forum, Karen is going to be barraged with comments about this and comments about that. And we're going to be having this meeting again in January, in February, and in March. Until we have an opportunity to have an open forum and go through this like we did the the procedural bylaw.
I don't disagree with that idea. I just don't think the version that is in front of you is worth our time to do that with today.
All right, let's let's see if we can't settle as a counsel on it. Let me call it the overall format first, because that was the first step that you asked for. And I think it's important that we we talk about whether, you know, two or three different levels. I mean, I I like I like the the sound of our clerk being I'm not sure gatekeeper is the right word, but the more that can the more that the clerk can be involved with the initial complaint, if I can put it that way. I think the better simply because as she said, she can provide the facts as we know them, the recorded facts. And and that may, in some cases, solve the problem, it may not. I mean, anybody who wants to file a complaint regardless of the level is 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 upset. And but they may have misinterpreted, misunderstood, misheard what was going on. So I think I I like the fact of having our our clerk be the 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 gatekeeper. I personally in favor the two option approach as opposed to the three and and being if if the complainant is is open to this, I think the idea of having a less formal, less structured discussion versus going immediately to the integrity commissioner, if that can solve it, because the integrity commissioner is very thorough. Regardless of whether or not you like what you read that she puts in her reports, they're long, extensive, thorough reports which may or may not cover all bases. If we can avoid that step, I think it's better for everybody, including the complainant. If we can resolve it beforehand. So I I like the idea of having a option to potentially hopefully resolve the issue before we get to, let me call it the lawyers involved. And I mean, I I would say the same thing in any normal business situation. If you can solve it before the lawyers get involved, do so. That won't always work, but I I liked the idea of having that in. Brian?
I I'm gonna address my question to our clerk Ms. Wade. In my response to your request, I mentioned that I thought there should be a stage where if there's a complaint lodged, that the clerk addresses the complaint. And I think there should be a step in here where both parties, the the applicant and complaint, have to agree to mediation. It's a simple step that if a complaint comes in and the clerk looks at it, it's to say this has to go directly to the integrity commissioner. Or we have a mediation process. Do both sides agree to mediation before going to integrity commissioner or going to the integrity commissioner rep? I I think by automatically having it mediated in house, there's certain members of council that won't want that. They feel that the infraction is such that there is no room for that. This should go directly to the integrity commissioner. I think that should be a part of this document.
I would agree with that, actually, Brian.
Did Karen, I did write in. Yeah, I I think it's I think it's important.
I just want to ask the clerk. Based on the current provincial law, does an individual have the right to go directly to the integrity commissioner and bypass you? So we wouldn't have, we would not have control over those i- if an individual chose to do that, we wouldn't have control over that. Ms. Gunby?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to make a few points of clarification here. In my opinion, the clerk would not be involved whatsoever in integrity commissioner complaint. Unless the mediation part is approved, then those complaints may go to the clerk. The integrity commissioner is to be a totally separate entity from township staff. So I would not want staff involved whatsoever when it comes to a complaint. So yes, if people choose to go straight to the integrity commissioner, those complaints should go straight to the integrity commissioner and staff would not be involved whatsoever. It is definitely not up to clerk to determine if something is frivolous or vexatious. That is up to the integrity commissioner. So I wouldn't want staff to have any sort of responsibility when it comes to this because it is a separate entity. And the integrity commissioner is a professional who would determine if anything is frivolous, vexatious, or deserves any sort of future investigation. And when it comes to the the suggestion of the clerk sending something to the integrity commissioner with backup documentation, I don't think that's correct either in the way that it could look like we are trying to persuade an opinion by providing information before it was asked for by the integrity commissioner because it's her investigation. And if it is about a meeting and something that happened in a council meeting, the clerk will be reached out to by the integrity commissioner for that information. So those are my eight cents about this.
No, I agree with that, Jessica. It's it's a legal thing. I mean, I I mean, if I could just comment on what Counselor Bochek said, I think that's that's fair enough. If both parties are in agreement to have an informal meeting to try and get it resolved before it goes further, that's one thing. But I really think asking the clerk to get involved and decipher information for the integrity commission in advance of a request from that office would be a conflict from a legal perspective.
So if I could just weigh in, because I I did like what our mayor had to say, and I and I think also Counselor Wianco made a comment that it it would be nice if the first step was to have our mayor and the C A O involved. And one suggestion I might have here is that we could have that sort of two step process, but maybe it could read something like the mayor, the C A O, or if required, mediation. So that we we go through a a phased process. And I also thought that Karen, you said that we, to a certain degree, have control over our process here. So I'm trying to understand that again. I I think what you did indicate to us is that the way we write this will have a certain amount of oversight as or just give direction as to what 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 is followed. I'd also like to comment that I I'm not suggesting that the staff or the mayor or the clerk agree to be making decisions on whether this is valid or not, but rather to examining the whether there are facts being presented or known to staff that it isn't a fact, it's actually a misunderstanding, etc. So that we avoid going down a path as I've seen in the past where the integrity commissioner has misunderstood the facts. So I I would, that's why I think it's important to have somebody at the township who can at least not make a decision, as I said, on whether it qualifies, but rather that there's some fact checking, I guess. And I don't think that's how and and the the thought that it's automatically going to happen through the integrity commissioner or the or the mediator isn't always the case. There's evidence of that. So a lot of it. Thank you.
I'm I'm gonna say to everybody else, I see occasional.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I'm just gonna say.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm time delayed here.
Keep talking.
I can't hear.
My comments are my sorry to Counselor Cooper. You made mention that perhaps the the mayor and the C A O should be made aware of the complaint and then they can take action from there. The mayor is part of this council. And my complaint very well may be. And in which case, I would simply pick up the phone and call the integrity commissioner and and lodge my complaint. If I were to go to the mayor and the C A O with a integrity commissioner driven complaint, it's hardly the right course of action to have the person that the complaint is against make the decision whether it's going to the.
That's why I said or mediator. So if it be the mayor, there was a question of code of conduct with the mayor, it should read the mayor, the C A O and the C A O or mediator.
Would, if I can just throw something in here, why do we have a mediator who we're gonna pay for a legal opinion probably or their opinion when we've got an integrity commissioner who gets complaints? And based off of the complaint makes a decision whether it is something that should be investigated or not? I think adding another layer in is just another cost and and duplication of what our integrity commissioner already does. I mean, if you don't have faith in our integrity commissioner, then we should be looking at whether we have that integrity commissioner. But to add another layer in there, I don't think it saves us any money. And I think I think that can be challenged, whether or not it's a good legal opinion. I yeah, I I don't know, I just.
I I think what's, you know, as as Ms. Gunby pointed out to us, if an individual wants to go straight to the integrity commissioner, there's nothing we can do about it. And it doesn't matter what we write in our policy, if an individual wants to go straight to the integrity commissioner, they will. I think what we are talking about here is in our policy, adding an option that people may be interested in. And and I I and I think it would be who the the clerk and the C A O, if we go down this road, that if they hear about somebody wanting to make a complaint, they might say, you know, there is this other option. And I think then we people, people would have the option to try to resolve this beforehand. I mean, I I obviously, we can't make it a requirement that you must go through the step one before you can do step two, because people can go straight to step two if they want. That's the, we call it the provincial law. They can go to the straight to the integrity commissioner if they want to.
Yeah, I don't.
What we want to do is offer a more a more simplified, straightforward approach if the complainant thinks that that might suffice.
No, I don't. I don't. I don't disagree with that, Peter. I think making the offer that there is another route is one thing, but making it mandatory, this is the route you have to go. Absolutely. I don't think we should be.
I'm not sure we can do that legally.
No, I like, I know we can't, but wanted to, you know, actually take advantage of working together on on some sort of mediation. Or just sitting down and talking in the, you know, with the mayor and the C A O, that I have no issue with that. But I think I think it has to be established then if that person decides to go that route, they want to take that option over the integrity commissioner. Who's paying for the? You know, who are we hiring to do the mediating? Is it the mayor, is it the C E O and the mayor is it C E O, mayor and a mediator or I mean, and who's paying for that? So maybe if you're going to make this an option, or we are going to make this an option. And it is just that an option, then that should be sort of hammered out first. I mean, how how do you deal with that exactly?
So Mayor, I'd like to just say.
I like the idea of just having a mediator could be the mayor and the C A O or a paid mediator. So I just say the idea of a mediator period. And the proponent can determine how they want to proceed, if they want to do it in house or hire a hire a professional mediator. So I like the idea of just saying mediation and we can determine what that is later on. So yeah, that's 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 rather the way I'd rather go.
If I could just interject, I think there's a distinction between mediation and integrity commissioner, and that is a using the integrity commissioner. And what we're trying to avoid here is is extensive costs when it may be solved more simply. And the integrity commissioner is the most expensive way to go because not only is there a re- a report and an examination and blah, 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 goes on and on and on. But then it means the integrity commissioner brings that report to council. There's a whole bunch of costs associated with that. Whereas if there's a mediator involved, it's not necessarily a report to council. It's mediated and hopefully solved. And if the mayor is and the C A O or the mediator is fine, if it it requires a professional mediator, it's still going to be way less expensive than going through the entire integrity commissioner process. So that's why I just wanted to sort of make it clear, Karen, is that correct? Is is it would, have you looked at sort of the costs associated with this? And if not, I think that's one of the things we need to consider. And I'd also like in in terms of point of law, because I did hear you say earlier, I want to know for sure that we can't write our code of conduct in such a way that it's an A and then B as opposed to I can just go to B. And and I'm not convinced unless we've got a legal opinion. Specifically, none of us in the room are lawyers. So I think we need to know whether it can be A then B versus just go to B. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know if we'll have an answer to that until we get further in this process because this approach is is unique.
I'd like to pipe up if I could. So the the topic is near and dear to my heart. I'll probably tell you guys later why it's more near and dear to my heart than it was before. But I've been doing a lot of research on this. And I found a legal opinion that I think I that I found valuable and I'll share share it with you. That this was provided to other townships and the when the role of the integrity commission was changed. And they are recommending careful consideration of the retainer agreement with the integrity commissioner to scope their role and identify how they seek instructions. And when I read that, what I'm essentially interpreting is our code of conduct will guide and direct excuse me, guide and direct the integrity commissioner on how the guy, the I C behaves and what process they go through. And if we choose to create a two step process, even though somebody goes directly to the I C, they need to conduct themselves according to our code of conduct. And if our code of conduct has this two step approach, then they would have to hand that first step back to the township to go through a mediating process. So that that's the first thing I want you to understand that that is a legal opinion. We may be able to get others, but that's that's one thing that I found very instructive. Also, what's also important about this is this legal firm has said that there are no regulations or guidelines that are imposed to ensure consistency amongst integrity commissioners when they conduct investigations. So again, what we have is a scenario where the integrity commissioner can do anything they want. Either investigate or not investigate. I'll be glad to provide comment on that topic later. But what's really important here then is that if we look at what a mediator is designed to do, a mediator by definition is intending to provide consensus across two parties who have a disagreement. And that mediator by definition doesn't take sides. They are an independent mediator who are trying to take two parties and somehow pull them together. The integrity commissioner's role today is very different. And so I think we want to be really careful about trying to lump the concept of a mediator and an integrity commissioner into the same pot. They are definitely not. Additionally, if there is a matter that relates to M C I A, it goes straight to the integrity commissioner regardless. And sadly, our code of conduct has section eleven, which is essentially talking about conflict of interest. But those conflict of interest elements are really M C I A governed conflict of interests. So if you were to get a complaint against you via the code of conduct that relates to section eleven, it is an M C I A defined criteria. And you should be immediately jumping to the wording and definitions in the M C I A for whether or not this is a valid complaint or not. Oddly enough, or perhaps not oddly enough, the M C I A is very specific. If you are being challenged with a pecuniary interest under M C I A, the complainant has to demonstrate that this is in the public interest that they are complaining as opposed to their own private personal grudge. And so these are fairly important things that we need to understand as we look at this. And what our clerk said at the very beginning was extremely, extremely important. Because if a complaint came in and it related to something that was going on in council and there were minutes of council recorded on YouTube that would illuminate the topic for the mediator or the I C, that should be immediately made available because we don't want to rely on the mediator or the I C to flounder around not being aware that these kinds of records exist. So our clerk, who is the custodian of all records of the township, is really in a very important position in this whole process. So that any complaint that comes in, any documentation from the township that relates to that particular type of claim should be started to be found and should be perhaps listed, maybe not delivered, but listed as here are documentation that relate to this claim that could be made available so that we have an open integrity based investigation of what's going on. I'll leave that there for the moment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add comment to Counselor Hazelton's, it's Counselor Bochek?
Yes.
In your statement, Counselor Hazelton, you said that if there's a breach of the M C I A, it automatically goes to the integrity commissioner. Not true. And that was found in the last term of council when there was a frivolous or or a complaint made and it did not go to the integrity commissioner. The people chose to take it directly directly to Supreme Court.
So Counselor Bochek, just to correct you on that, the the current legislation regarding the integrity commissioner changed after your experience. And so what you are relating here predates the current legislation of the integrity commissioner and the roles that they play in our township.
Okay, thank you for that update. And in response to your statements, I still believe that if if I have a complaint about another council member, the act allows me to phone the integrity commissioner directly, lodge my complaint, and then she will do an investigation to find out whether or not my claim is frivolous or vexatious, or has the grounds or basis to be investigated.
Actually, actually, you you have to sign a form with the clerk, sworn affidavit before that process can begin. You can't do it via phone.
So in saying that, if the integrity commissioner has the ability to either say there is there is a reason to go forward with this, or there is no basis for this, the integrity commissioner to, to look at the complaint and say, this is frivolous or vexatious. I'm not going to pursue it. The bill that we receive for that evaluation is not what you're leading everybody to believe it is, this great big, huge investigation and huge bill. It can be simply said by the integrity commissioner, no, I'm not going to investigate this. You don't, you do not have reasonable cause. So getting back to my original point, I think it's very important that council members can contact the integrity commissioner directly, which I've done in the past. And if both people decide that mediation may be a resolve, then both counselors and the complainant and, and the applicant can, can go into mediation. But I, I'm certainly, if there is a complaint against me by you, and it goes to mediation, I'm going to refuse the mediation. I'm going to say, no, take it directly to the integrity commissioner.
Why?
If you got a complaint about me, take it directly to the integrity commissioner. The integrity commissioner will find out soon enough that I was not in breach, and she'll dismiss it and say, I'm not going to investigate it. Here's your bill for it.
There's no record of that actually happening, Brian.
Okay, if I could just sort of interject, I think Counselor Bocheck is saying this has to be made not mandatory. I mean, I, I don't disagree with mediation being an option, but I don't think we can have a step one, step two approach where we make the decision whether those two people go into mediation. I just think that's, I, I think that takes away the rights of, of not only council members, but the public. You know, having a two-step process, I think, yes, it's great. If everybody says, yes, that's, let's try that first, great. But if somebody disagrees with that, then I think there is no way you should be forcing people into doing mediation when they disagree, they feel they strongly have a case. And that's when our integrity commissioner is going to say, yes, we have a case, or no, we don't. That's how I feel about that.
And as I just said, and I'll say it again, there's very little evidence of the integrity commissioners. And we've had two of them, one, one that took a vexatious situation and ran with it for a long time, and got a huge bill. So there's a bit of a conflict in terms of make-work project, so.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that, because I've actually seen it on the contrary. So I'll disagree with you. We'll have to disagree.
What we don't know is how many complaints have gone to the integrity commissioner that she determined were vexatious, and therefore we haven't heard about them. I have no idea. There might be zero, but I have no idea, because we wouldn't know that. And there's no question that we can sometimes disagree with part or much of what the integrity commissioner writes, but she's been hired for her professional abilities. And when, when somebody presents a case to her, then she has to determine, based on her knowledge and experience, whether that's worth pursuing. But I'm sensing from all of us that in, in answer to Ms. Way's initial inquiry, and that was, we had three options. All complaints go through integrity commissioner, or we have an option of integrity commissioner or something else that is available to the complainant, or we have a three-step. I'm not hearing, hearing anybody say they want the three steps, so I think we can just rule that one out. But I think most of us are open to a, having two options, even, even though I think a lot of us will say we can't force somebody to go through the junior option versus the non-integrity commissioner option, but we can make it available. And I think I'm sensing council would more or less agree to having that second option available, but not making it mandatory.
I haven't, I haven't spoken yet. I've been doing a lot of listening. I'm, I'm curious if we can, I know Alan is well-versed in the code as, as per municipal act, and maybe that'll help a bit. But at what point, I, I like the idea, I like the idea of the three, of the three options, the two options is find alternative. But I need to know, I need to have a better idea of, apropos of what Counselor Bocheck has been stating, can we direct that a complaint will initially go through our clerk? Or is there no legal basis for, I mean, are we even able to do that? I guess is my question, under the municipal act. Can we direct people to our clerk who can initially provide, I guess, background data that would help with whether the complainant should be going to the IC or, or just doing it through mediation? I, I'm trying to figure out where, where we stand legally on this. I understand that Counselor Bocheck's comments about going straight to the IC, some people just don't see it any other way, and which, in my mind, hey, if that's the way they feel about it, that's the way they feel about it. I don't think we can dictate, though I could be wrong, and that's what I want to find out. Can we dictate how a complaint is processed? Or does it automatically, is there the automatic option without us in, in, in being involved? Us being counsel, clerk, whatever, of that person who has a complaint going straight to the IC?
My understanding, based on what Ms. Gunby told us, is that if an individual wants to go straight to the IC, they can. I think where the question comes up is can that IC, shall I say, more than just suggest mediation of some form?
Yeah.
Or hand, that's, I think, where the question comes up. And Ms. Gunby, well, I know when you show your face, you want to talk.
Go for it.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to clarify, if, if the mediation is adopted by council, then yes, they would start with the clerk. If they want to go to the integrity commissioner, again, our staff would not be involved whatsoever. So the, like Counselor Hazelton stated, the affidavit of a complaint does need to be commissioned, but it does not have to be commissioned by our clerk, just commissioned by anyone who has the ability to commission. So anything going straight to the integrity commissioner should not involve staff in any way.
But what, what, what Counselor Hazelton also suggested that is that the integrity commissioner has to respect our code of conduct in conducting her work. And if that code of conduct, I don't know if you want to use the word encourages, or at least offers a middle step or an initial step, to what degree can we encourage or let, maybe even demand, in the most strong terms, that she advise the complainant to talk to, go through the mediation step first? I'm not at all sure that we could legally do that, but that, that would be one of my questions. Couldn't we, with the integrity commissioner?
I think it's a good idea, Peter, is to look into that. But I mean, bar them saying that legally they, they, she cannot do that, or he cannot do that, or whoever's in that position at the time, perhaps that could be something that we could put a wording in of the integrity commissioner offering the information that there is another route that the township provides, should they wish to take it, not say that they have to. I, I just, I mean, even if somehow the wording got out there and, and everybody was talking about this being a two-step situation where, you know, you have to do this and you have to do that. Quite frankly, I'll just be frank about it, I will not agree to it, because I think that takes away the rights of people that are, you know, getting involved with, with making complaints. I think the option, I have no issue with that, because I agree, to try and get something mediated out is so much more cost-effective, and often the results are much, much quicker and an understanding gets done. But I do not think that we should be putting those kind of restrictions on our public or our council members or otherwise. I think it should be an option, and it's a good option. I mean, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, it's not a good option. I think whenever you can resolve issues without involving lawyers, it's very, very beneficial for everyone. So I just don't agree, and probably will never agree, to the fact that, you know, if we get this wording in here that says, or somebody puts it out there, I cannot agree to forcing people into that as a two-step process, as you have to do this before you do that. But I think if the integrity commissioner can be, if it's legal for us to say that she, she can advise people that there is that step first, but she can't possibly, from a legal perspective, tell our public or our counselors that they have to do it, I think, I think that's probably where that could go. But I think that's probably more likely where it's going to go. I don't think by law she'll be allowed to do that, but I guess we'll, we'll find out.
We're no lawyers in the room, so I'm suggesting that we get advice on all of the options that we're talking about here, including, can we write our code of conduct in such a way that it's required that there's a two-phase process? And we don't know the answer to that question. I think there's lots of suggestions, and I appreciate the knowledge of others, but I don't think we've nailed it fully down. So that would be my recommendation. We're going to talk about this forever if we don't get that clarified. Thank you.
It's a good idea, Peter. Legal opinions, always good.
Brian?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think we have to look at the big picture here. I'm not going to be dragged into a mediation because somebody, somewhere on a lake, didn't like a comment I made, or didn't like what I said in council, and all of a sudden they phone and drag me into a mediation process, and I got to go talk with a mediator with this person from who knows where with a complaint against me. And the same goes for a council member. If the council member thinks that I'm in breach, or I've done something wrong, phone the integrity commissioner. I got nothing to hide. I don't need a scapegoat by maybe going into mediation and worming my way out of a situation I've gotten myself into. I need to be accountable as a counselor for my actions. And the only way to be accountable is to be held to a higher court, and that's our integrity commission. So I will not agree to any of this. As an option, yes. If I have the option of phoning the integrity commissioner, or if I have a problem with Counselor Cooper, I may change, I may say, I'd like to mediate with Counselor Cooper and see if we can work our differences out. And in that case, we move into the mediation process.
The integrity, the integrity commissioner, the integrity commissioner isn't even a lawyer, and it's not a court, Brian.
Our integrity commissioner is a lawyer.
No, she is not.
I didn't know she was disbarred.
She dropped out from being a lawyer, and she is backed up by John Mastrin as the legal opinion whenever she needs a lawyer opinion.
Semantics, guys, that doesn't-
And then we're, and we're not talking today about the qualifications of our integrity commissioner.
Yeah, that, that's, that's not what the topic is. The topic is, do we have a two-tiered system where if there's a complaint that goes to mediation, and if it's not solved in mediation, it goes to the integrity commissioner? No, I'm not going to support that in any way, shape, or form. It allows a scapegoat for people that have broken the rules by, by talking and talking their way out of it. If there's facts and it's not frivolous and vexatious, the complaint should be made to the integrity commissioner, and the integrity commissioner will investigate it. And if there is a reason to continue the investigation, and I don't care if you call it a court or what you call it, our mediator is not going to be able to issue a discipline. The integrity commissioner has the ability to make recommendations for discipline, which council can, can approve or, or decline. I think the process the way it is, is fine. I don't wish to change anything in the existing, but if you want to add to the existing, that if both parties are in agreeance to mediation, then mediation will take place. Outside of that, I have no interest in, in listening to somebody in mediation trying to talk their way out of what they did wrong. And I'm, and I have to defend myself? I would rather, we're all going to lawyer up in mediation. I'm not going to go to the mediation, I'm going to send my lawyer. So we're opening up a whole can of worms here. And then what happens under the mediation? Does all the results come into closed session for council to hear? Or are they buried in the mediation and nobody finds out anything about it? I think there's a lot of unanswered questions here, folks. And, and I think if there's a legitimate complaint, you have the option. Both council, both parties agree to mediation, great. But you have, you have to have the ability to go directly to the integrity commissioner, and I certainly wouldn't support anything else.
Paul, you're muted.
I think Brian has some good points there, because I think the idea of having mediation makes it a lot easier for people to file complaints. And if they, if, if it was, they had to go to the integrity commission, they may think twice about it. So I, you know, I, I'm with Brian. If somebody's got a complaint against me, I'll say, to hell with it, go to the, go to the integrity commission to prove your point. But don't drag me through some kind of a mediation and waste my time when, you know, all the facts may not be applicable. So I may be on Brian's side here, that just, to hell with it. Go, go to the integrity commissioner and file your case in. I'll file my case, and we'll see what happens. But just to give the people an option for mediation, I think maybe encouraging complaints.
I can, I'm just going to pipe in really quickly here. I can tell you that recently there's been something that was launched against me, which was from personal reasons and vexatious. And if somebody had said to me, you need to go to mediation first, I would have been sending my lawyer and saying, absolutely not. So, you know, the integrity commissioner handled that one. But I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, I, I agree with what Counselor Bocheck is saying and Counselor Wianco. When you have that kind of situation come up, there's no way you're going to get me or anyone else that's probably in that position, sitting in there. It's like, if you've got a complaint and you think it's valid, you take it straight to the integrity commissioner, because they're going to sort it out, whether it's vexatious right away. I am not going to be sitting in a mediation with someone from some area that has decided they don't like this, or this is going to, to their advantage, create some sort of, you know, stain against my name. Not happening. So I totally agree. I, I would not even enter into that, that discussion.
Well, I, I, I think that, you know, mediation, if, if it were an option, doesn't work unless both parties are willing to take part. And if you're not willing to take part, then it, it's not going to fly anyway. But I think that I, I personally would like, I like the idea of being, of there being a step before the integrity commissioner, if that will solve the issue. But it all, it very much depends on the nature of the issue.
Let's get an answer from a lawyer. Thank you.
May I only suggest that even during a mediation process, both parties, as our mayor has illustrated and said clearly, that both parties have to be willing to go through the mediation process. And even at that stage, at some point, somebody may come out during mediation that creates a situation where one of the two parties says, forget it, I'm going to the IC. And even at the end of a mediation process, I think it was described in the, the stuff, the, the, the information that our clerk provided, is mediation doesn't necessarily have to mean that things have to be settled. At the end of a mediation process, it may be determined that the whole thing has to go to IC anyway. So as per what the mayor has said, mediation works at both parts, and has been, has been illustrated by Counselor Wianco, Coop, sorry, Douglas and Bocheck. And I agree, if both parties don't want to mediate, or if one of the two parties doesn't want to mediate, mediation doesn't, I mean, definition of mediation is that the two people, the, the parties will agree to it. And if they don't, then yeah, IC's there.
All right, I think what there's been some openness to having mediation as an option, but I think it, we've, as we've said, a number of us in different ways, I think we have to get a little bit more of a legal opinion on what we can or can't do, what the integrity commissioner laws of the province will or will not allow. And we've also heard from our clerk that until we know whether or not we can put a second option into this list, she's going, she's reluctant to sort of fine-tune the, the, the document, their code of conduct too much at this point. So I, I, I kind of feel we've reached with our discussion here, and I think it's been a good discussion, that we've reached the, the point that we need some outside advice before we decide which road we're going to go down. And, because I see two roads. One road being basically fine-tuning what we have, and the second road being adding a second option in our code of conduct for a, some form of mediation or preliminary discussion, or whatever you want to call it.
May I, may I also respectfully suggest that while many people would really, as per Counselor Bocheck's comments, go, want to go straight to the IC, if the IC's aware that there's a mediation process, that may be something that was not evident to the-
that may be something that was not evident to the person making the complaint initially, or it's possible somebody doesn't want to have to go to the IC because they don't feel the complaint is that that severe, and when they're given this option of mediation, they may take it instead.
Well, and that's why I think it'd be good to have that option, and both the integrity commissioner and the clerk would be aware of it, obviously. And therefore, they can say, well, maybe you should talk it out with a couple other people in the room before we escalate to the integrity commissioner investigation.
Peter, I think, I think in this in this format that we're using today, we can be candid and open. And my understanding here is that the consensus among all council members, including yourself, is there's room for the mediation process. Everybody has said, yes, mediation process could be a part of our act, but what I've heard from two counselors, being Counselor Hazelton and Counselor Cooper, they want, by the sounds of it, and I could have taken their comments wrong, they want a two-stage approach to this, where a complaint comes in, it goes to mediation. And if there's not a resolution in mediation, it goes to the integrity commission. And what I was simply saying is, yes, fine with mediation if both parties agree to it. But if the first step is mediation, and I say, no, then the mediation process is over, and it goes directly to the integrity commission. So as an option, the mediation as an option is a great idea, but it can't be mandated to council members. They have to go to mediation first before going to the integrity. You have a right to go to the integrity commissioner. It's in the, it's right in the act, so I'm all for, and I think all council members said, if both parties, or I shouldn't say all council members said, but mediation is a good process, and it can work in a lot of cases, but it shouldn't be mandated that we go to mediation first. It should be an option.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that that option should be included. What we're not in agreement with, and we do not have the, we'll call it, legal backup one way or another as well, is whether it can be mandatory. And, you know, and it's hard to make something like mediation mandatory in the sense of if somebody refuses to participate, that kind of ends it. But having said that, I believe we've now given direction to our clerk. Two-pronged, one is that we are open to having a mediation-type option in our code of conduct, and two, we'd like to get some legal opinion as to how how that is included. You know, whether it's a mandatory step, or whether it is a optional step, and the lawyers might recommend some sort of wording around that.
I agree, and further to my point, where this fails is if a member of the public wanted to lodge a complaint against a council member who acted out of character or breached the municipal act, and they're told, well, why don't you come in and sit down with the council member and talk it out before you go to the integrity commissioner? How many of those people do you think are going to come in and sit down and try and hash it out? They have a complaint, they want to lodge the complaint with the integrity commissioner, and I think that should be the ability of everyone.
Well, and certainly at this moment, it is. But that's, again, why we need to get some legal advice as to whether or not that can be mandated or simply an option.
Thank you.
And once we have that legal advice, that will also affect some of the wording that our clerk will put into the proposed new code of, or revised code of conduct.
But I think what we're saying, though, that we, even if a lawyer says it can be mandated, I don't think some of us will agree. I think it's still our option. Yeah, it's still our option to not make it mandatory, and I, and I agree with Brian and other people that it shouldn't be mandatory, even though the lawyer may say it could be mandatory. So, you know, if somebody's got a complaint against me, I'm going to say, fine, take it to the integrity commission. If you think your case is so strong, I'm not going to go to mediation.
And that's.
To council. It's up to council to make that decision, though, and we need to hear the advice, and then we decide on where we want to go.
All right. I think, given where we're at now, I think perhaps we should get some more advice before we start going through it line by line, because we don't know whether it's going to be a one or one-stage or a two-optional, two-stage approach. Okay.
Peter, if I may, I think we could cover a fair bit of ground here that doesn't relate to this particular matter. Anyway, I think we're going to stretch this out forever if we don't work through some of the questions that may have been risen, raised with respect to some of the verbiage, and I'm not sure this, the result, the last sort of three or four pages are driving the whole thing. So my suggestion is that we try and work through some of this at least.
Last three pages dictate some of the terminology and the intent of some of the previous paragraphs in the first section. So that's my concern. I don't want to waste our time. If at the end of the day, there is no mediation, or there is mediation, but it's optional, or what the case may be, or what our expectations are of the integrity commissioner versus the mediator. I think there's just too many variables at this point for it to be a wholesome or for these things to change.
Well, then, might I suggest that that we try and schedule something sooner rather than later? And I would also suggest that that might be an opportunity for us in the committee of the whole again to, since we've taken care of one matter, we also discussed that there's the committee issue, so we could go through the code of conduct at our next meeting and the committee issue. So that would be my hope, and as I said, sooner, hopefully, rather than later.
Yeah, I would agree. Ms. Way, do you want me, you need this resolution, or?
I would like direction for to obtain a legal opinion because that's spending money that isn't currently budgeted. So I have drafted a resolution, if you'd like me to read it.
I would.
Okay, so be it resolved, the committee of the whole receives the clerk's report 2020-31 regarding the draft code of conduct. And that the committee of the whole recommends that staff obtain a legal opinion regarding the use of mediation within the code of conduct.
Okay. Simple.
But I thought we agreed that the use of mediation needs to be, there's a couple of questions there. It's, have you, you know what the questions are?
I know what the questions are. I just don't think it's relevant for the resolution. That's all. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Okay, and that is carried.
You need some names on that, no names on that resolution.
Okay, moved by Counselor Wianco, seconded by Counselor Bocheck. Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Is there any new business on the agenda? I don't think anything came up. Then we now have moved by Counselor, can't use Douglas, because I don't see her right now. Moved by Counselor Cooper, seconded by Counselor Hazelton. Be resolved, the committee of the whole does now adjourn at 11:51 a.m. until Monday, January 11th, 2021, for the call of the chair, Counsel Hazelton.
Given what we've heard with the enormous amount of communication, it occurs to me that given this topic has been going on forever, and we really haven't made much progress, that we should be planning on a special meeting where we can discuss this, and given the number of comments that I've made on the existing document, irrespective of this issue of legal approvals of mediation, et cetera, I think that we should be considering not adjourning this to another normal meeting, but in fact, calling a special meeting for consideration.
I wouldn't disagree, except that until the clerk obtains the information we've asked her, we can't really call the next meeting.
I get it, and I'm okay with setting a future date, but I think that we should be also setting an expectation that we are going to call a special meeting, and that we are going to ask our clerk to expedite a legal opinion so that we are in a position where we can do that. Otherwise, we will be in December 2021 discussing this topic again.
Yep. No, I agree that, and it's it's a serious enough topic that if we put it in a regular meeting, we won't get to the regular business.
That we're aware of that.
All right. Did I already take the voter, didn't I? I think I took, oh, all those in favor at 11:53. Okay, and that is carried. Thank you very much. I do believe we made some headway here.